It's 5:31. I'll call the meeting to order and pause for a moment of silent reflection. Okay. Bryce, for the pledge allegiance, Craig, do you mind leading us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. In Willie's absence, we'll have Karen lead us on a roll call and determination of quorum. Here.
Jerry Bermeister.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here. Here.
Great. We have a quorum four out of five. The only order of business tonight is regarding the electric rate or proposed electric rate ordinance of 23-28. And so with that, I will turn it over to Buzz Cronin, who has prepared our rate study for our electric utility.
Thank you very much. With record Buzz Cronin, with OW Cronin and Associates, and we went through this very similar presentation a few weeks ago with the Rate Advisory Board. That's led to the preparation of proposed ordinance, I understand. And with that, why don't we jump right into the next slide here? The Indiana Code sets out the jumped two down. Go the other way. There we go. Thank you. And Indiana Code 8-1.5-3-8 sets forth the utility rate making formula for municipal electric utilities. It's also the same one for the water utility that we went through a month or so ago. But it establishes the statutory revenue requirements and the statute actually says that there's certain of these revenue requirements that shall be sufficient. Doesn't say could, maybe, might, so shall be sufficient to cover the cash operation and maintenance expenses of the electric utility. That service on bonds and other indebtedness, which I think one more bond payment. And then you're out of debt once again here. But debt reserves and working capital and depreciation allowance and allowance for capital improvements to the extent that that might exceed what the depreciation allowance would provide for. Then there are additional provisions that include payments in lieu of taxes, which you all make to the general fund. It's a means of compensating the general fund for the taxes that would have been received had the utility been privately owned. And then a return on plant. We're not going to deal with return on plant, but all those others revenue requirements set forth in the statute is what we're basing the proposed revenue requirements for the Pendleton Municipal Electric Utility. The process that we went through is pretty straightforward. First, we look at the historical financial information. We went back three or four years to get us some baseline footing for future projections. And I know there's been an effort here to realign the overhead allocations and the costs that are attributable to electric and water utilities. So there's been some weaning off of the general fund in that regard. The supplementary information gives us a little bit more rounded understanding of utility. We look here specifically at your utility plant investment amounts and levels, your your customer usage characteristics for your different user classes, residential, commercial, and then large power and industrial power, or called primary power, I believe, in on the rate schedule that we're proposing. The, and then we look at it. The next phase is developing pro forma financial information where the biggest thing with the electric utility is synchronizing purchase power costs you get from IMPA with your energy cost adjustment tracking revenue. Every three months, you go through a calculation where we estimate what the power costs are going to be for the next three months in advance and reconcile the last three months in arrears so that there's no permanent over or under collection of power costs. And we do that every, every quarter. That's a procedure that was approved by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission after the inception of IMPA. And even though you're not regulated by the Utility Regulatory Commission, we still try to follow those general principles and, and the rate making formula, just as though you were regulated by the commission. It doesn't really change the rules whether you're in or out of the commission, but this is a much more streamlined and home rule and saves you a lot of time and money by not having to deal with the regulatory commission. You're different than an investor-owned utility. They're in business to earn profits, pay dividends to shareholders. You're a municipal utility. You're a not-for-profit utility. You're here to try to make the rates sufficient to do what needs to be done, but you're not in it to make a profit, pay dividends to shareholders because you're the rate payers are, in fact, the shareholders of your municipal utility. So again, we developed the revenue requirements for the proposed utility rates. I think in this case, again, there's been significant increases in the cost of wholesale power. You know, it's a reflection of a number of things, you know, obviously COVID and supply chain issues and gasoline and power, you know, fuel costs have gone through the roof. We're actually seeing just in the last year, from this year to last year, over a penny per kilowatt hour increase. I think it's about 1.2 cents per kilowatt hour that wholesale power costs have gone up that much. You're recovering that through your tracking factor. But now we're at a point where we're going to recalibrate the tracking factor. The tracking factor is part of your rate and it's what people are paying. We'll zero that out when we adopt this new increase and then we'll benchmark in the future from the 2023 IMPA rates going forward. Just one more here. Just brief, you're on a cash basis accounting. So when we talk about a balance sheet here, you're looking at your significant assets, your utility plant service and accounts receivable. The it's a snapshot of your utility at a particular point in time. The income statement measures the performance within a certain period of time. You know, our, our test year in this case was year end 2022, so that we've used the year-end cutoff for our test year. And again, in looking at these two financial statements, which are in the reports that we provided previously, I'm just trying to hit the highlights here tonight and not get too lost in the weeds, but the utility plant valuation at historical cost is about $7 million. I would estimate that replacement cost of those utilities would probably be three to four, maybe five times what the historical cost is. If you had to go out and do a replacement cost valuation, it would be substantially greater than what it costs you to start putting in the electric utility 30, 40, 50 years ago. And some of those assets are still in service. Polls for number one. That's going to be a significant issue going forward because they have exceeded their useful life. And I think the plan is to replace you know, a number of poles. It might take 10 years to, to revamp them all, but that's a significant part of your capital plan going forward. Again, the you've had some variations in cash due to, we call it CAC, contributions in aid of construction where you go out and put in all the lines for a new subdivision development and then they reimburse you later. Sometimes that doesn't all happen in the same year. Sometimes, you know, it might be the following year before you collect that. But we call those below the line expenditures. What we focus on is your net operating revenues. And there's just not sufficient net operating revenues to keep up with the capital outlays that you need to make going forward. And I did do a little history checking. Your current base rates were established in 2008 and back then the cost, you, you have two major components to the utility rate that you pay. One is a demand charge. Back then it was about $16 per KW, which is a measurement of the demand that you put on the system with it. They bill you on a one-hour period. You bill your demand customers on a 15-minute interval, but, but at any rate, it was $16 a KW in 2008. Now it's almost $26 a KW. You were paying a wholesale rate of 2.1 cents per kilowatt hour back in 2008. Now it's just under four cents per kilowatt hour. The average cost per kilowatt hour back in, in 2008 was less than six cents per kilowatt hour. When you blend the demand and energy costs together, now it's about almost 10 cents per kilowatt hour. So we will recalibrate the base rates to reflect that. It's almost four cents that we're going to be rolling into your base rate, zeroing out your track. That, that parts a net zero in terms of what you're billing your customers, but it does have a significant impact, obviously, on, on the level of your base rates of charges. Let's go ahead to the next slide. That's when I checked on the tracker files that we're benchmarking off of the IMPA base rates from 2008. You did do a change last year with the utility receipts tax.
Right.
But that didn't really change your base rates and charges and just not 1.2 cents or percent off of, because the state did away with utility receipts tax, but long time, long time to go without a rate increase. And you've made up for it with growth and system growth development has helped sustain that, but not many utilities could go 15 years without changing their base rates and charges. And now you have passed on the increased cost of purchasing power. That goes through that ECA or Energy Cost Adjustment Tracking Factor. So that's the biggest part of your cost of doing business is buying power for resale. But all of your other overhead maintenance of the system and capital projects that you need, that's where the rest of the rate has not been changed for 15 years. You've got about 1.9 million in your depreciation fund and about 3 million in your capital improvement fund. That is not excessive reserves for, for a utility of your size and complexity. It it's useful when you have to do a big outlay. We're going to put in an annual amount for depreciation and the capital plan. But there's going to be years where you're going to spend maybe three or four times that annual allowance just to keep up with the needs of the system when, when you need to rebuild a substation or if you do a lot of pole replacements, transformers, conductor, et cetera. Those costs with your utilities, you can't not do something that needs to be done. It's got to be done. So having those figures in reserve. Now, the capital improvement fund was really funded from fees you're getting from developers. So that's, that's funds that have been built up over time that for cost of developers buying into your system when they connect new developments. But and the depreciation fund is really what you've accumulated through rates over the last 15 years. But we're at a point where we're eroding those funds now, not accumulating them. So again, the 2017 bonds are going to pay off January 1st of 2024. And then we won't have any more debt service payments. Your billing data, about 45% of your revenue comes from residential customers, 40% from commercial, and about 11% from your larger industrial power customers. Your line loss is less than 6%. So you've got a pretty tight system, I would say. The average cost for power last year was about 8.4 cents per kilowatt hour sold. This year, it's about 9.7 cents per kilowatt hour sold. And again, you're, you're making up those increases with the ECA tracking factor, but you're not earning any extra profits from that ECA. Profits may not be the right word either.
So having had a rate decrease for 15 years. It triggered it. We tried to do one in the second, first public hearing I was in. Didn't have enough information. So the utility rate, they rejected it. Few years. But this year, last year, it got to the point where costs were good, so I, that we couldn't keep the money away for capital projects. So we had to do it. Hats off to Craig. Good job.
I know that Craig is extremely frugal and keeps track of everything when it goes to like a development situation down to the foot.
Anything else on that slide?
No, I just wanted.
No, that's a good, that's an excellent point because you have to survive for 15 years without a rate increase is hats off to your operating crews. Let's go on. There we go. This is the probably the single biggest issue in looking at electric rates is determining what our base cost of power is going to be embedded in this new base rate. And that future ECA tracking factors will benchmark off of, off of this. So the additional in the power costs have gone up almost four cents per kilowatt hour sold. And when I distinguish the difference between kilowatt hour purchases and kilowatt hour souls, the difference there is that level of unaccounted for kilowatt hours that is inherent in any utility. If that was 15%, we'd be looking at what, what the heck's going on, but you're always going to lose a little bit of kilowatt hours through transformation, through and metering can be another issue. I think you guys are on top of metering now too, so and you're well within the industry standard at 5.8%. So, but our tracker role in basically the cost of buying power has gone up about four cents since your rates were last adjusted. That's the number that will roll into the new rates before we figure it. And, and so we synchronize not just the purchase power cost projections, but also the ECA tracking revenue that would follow that, that rolling. So let's go on to the next slide here. And this is, this is really the key slide here that we looked at. In looking at your current rates, you're not really earning anything over and above your cash operating costs, what you're paying on bond, principal and interest, and then your pilot payments to the civil town. In fact, you're, you're about $840,000 shy of funding that under your current rates of charges. Now, looking forward, we, we're going to do away with the bond payments because they'll be paid off at the end of this year. So that sort of is offset by putting in a depreciation factor of 250,000 a year. And that's basically about 3.3% of your $7 million plant investment. So now that 3.3%, you know, if we were basing that on the replacement cost value of that plant, that number would be three or four times that amount, but we're using historical costs and coming up with a depreciation factor. You actually have a capital plan that requires about $600,000 a year to fund, but the fact that we do have some of those cash reserves noted on the you know, the balance sheet discussion. What we did is we made two options for consideration. One would be to build in half of that as a pay-as-you-go capital plan and the other is if you put the full capital plan in. The if, if we look at option one, where we're just putting half of that capital plan in to the rates at this point, we're looking at about the 12 and a half percent rate adjustment. The, that's going to be about $17 a month roughly for a average residential customer that uses 1,000 kilowatt hours a month. That's sort of a rule of thumb. Now, you've got customers that single elderly widow, fixed income type of users that probably get by with 400 or 500 kilowatt hours a month. So their increase is going to be a lot less, but a typical residential customer, and that's averaging bigger users and small users, would, would look at about a $17 a month increase for option one. And that option two would require about another $4.50. I think we decided to go forward with option one. Is that what you've got factored in there, Jeff?
I let that one blank.
Okay. Okay. One idea was to maybe take a significant step out of the box and then maybe phase in option two over, you know, the next couple of years. But that's the range that we have, we've been discussing. There's also we wanted to let's go to the large, the next slide there. The large power users that right now are paying demand charge of $7.58, which is you know, about 25% of what you're paying to IMPA for demand. And then they're, they are paying about, you know, higher energy cost of 9.7 cents per kilowatt hour. If we were to just increase those across the board, you know, you see that up above, but what we'd like to do is make a, a large power monthly rate formula that mirrors what we're paying to IMPA. And that's what we're showing here. Where we're paying IMPA $25.74 per KW. And it, it would not be inappropriate to add an overhead factor to that, that cost. We use 35% because about 65% of your total revenue requirements are going to IMPA. And we'd want everybody to contribute to the overhead of operating the utilities and maintaining the lines of transformation. There's a lot of expense. When something goes down on the electric utility, you don't really fix it, you replace it. Substations, transformation is very expensive. So at any rate, the other, but then we'd also give them a reduction in what they pay on the energy side. We the average cost per kilowatt hour sold from IMPA under our current rates, that this is just the energy piece, not the demand pieces, just under four cents per kilowatt hour. And if we apply that same overhead factor, they pay about five and a quarter cents per kilowatt hour plus just about $35 demand charge. So the again, right now you have three or four customers that would fall into that, that bucket. The this is simplify, you know, it, it mirrors how you're being charged by IMPA. This, this sort of shows what the current gross profits are for each of those. So you've got the schools are big users and then you've got three industrial customers that Performance Services is contributing pretty good but some of the other ones were never really we had different overhead allocations tractor supply, merchandise warehouse that they should all be the same, you know, as a bottom line. I think they were brought in under certain incentive rates and then never really went away. So the pro forma rates below here would be what we would propose for, for those three industrial customers and schools and that increases, you know, they would pay like I say, Performance Services would pay about the same level of increases all the other residential, commercial customers. Tractor Supply and Merchandise Warehouse would get a little bit higher increase because they're underpaying right now based on those old formulas that I'm not sure, we're not sure, you know, who developed those. It probably was, was done with the help of IMPA at the time they came in, but then you know, it never, it never got updated, would be my guess. And school comes out about the same as it, as everybody else too, so I think the rate that we, we were coming out okay on the rate being charged to Performance Services and the schools, but the other two were contributing, so that gets them all into the same. They're all being treated the same and that was sort of a goal to get that fixed. So that's in a nutshell. Why don't we go back one slide? One, maybe go back two slides. There we go. I think that's really the key slide there. I think option one is sort of a, you know, where we should at least go to that level. And then perhaps if we wanted to do some sort of an annual inflationary type adjustment, keep in mind the ECA will continue to keep in mind the ECA will continue to recover the power costs, whether they go up or down. But the other overhead, you're going to have inflation in salaries and, you know, materials and supplies. You know, just seeing enormous increases in material supply costs and capital costs last couple of years. So probably not. I'm sorry.
Just so that the town council can understand, the key number here is lightly touched on it. So we have 4,000 poles. Some of our ancient already, well beyond there. Haven't had a place pole program down. So if we replaced 100 poles a year, it was that would be, yeah, 40 years. That would cost us in today's dollars, that's the 600. So if we reduced it down to half, 50 poles a year. So that, those are two key numbers really, the two different rates, right?
Yep.
So just so you understand, that's really what this boils down to, what our operating costs are, obviously very efficient. What we have to cover, you know, whatever the cost of electricity is, we have no control of. That number would be more astronomical, but Craig started a program of underground placing utilities.
That helps when you have a ice storm. But new developments want that anyway, just aesthetically.
Their areas will just never be able to guard ground, especially in the town.
So I guess, do you all have any questions? I know you've had the reports for a while. Feel free to throw the tough questions at me.
I think Scott asked the question I was going to ask. It's literally been 15 years since we've had a rate increase.
So we're talking about less than 1% a year. If you look at it that way now, obviously since power costs have been tracked through automatically, that, you know, it might come out closer to 3% a year realistically. But your overhead portion of the power bill has not been changed for 15 years.
Also the, the bond that's being paid off. So if you remember when the town began annexation of it, we had to set our territory with the utility rate.
A URC.
So our, one, one thing for planning purposes during this growth is our boundary is set. We'll never go from where our footprint is now. So we have AV, we're always going to say Duke is always going to stay there. We have Hilton, it's always going to stay there. For the smart, so for planning purposes, that makes staff's life a lot easier. But we don't have to worry about that unknown variable if our territory is manned physically or territory is set by the state.
And that coincides with the 2008 increase because I know that's when you acquired my neighborhood's power.
That's a good one.
So.
But I used to be able to seek to serve annexation areas at that. You know, you do have that big area south of here that got annexed several years ago, but it's still ripe for development. So there's still room to grow within your current boundary. But it's staked out, you know. You know, the area you got to take care of.
Yeah. And as aggressive as I would like to be regarding this pole replacement, at the end of the day, I think option one is a more palatable option for our residents. And that was kind of the feedback that we got from utility rate commission also. And that's in line similar, similarly to what we did with the water utility also. And so that's kind of where my head is at. Anybody have questions for Buzz or Scott or Craig while we're discussing?
Yeah, I heard you make the comment that you was also the better.
Yeah, that's, I do, that's what, you know, commissioner, advisor question is, that's probably.
It's a significant step.
And I think the key here is we don't wait 15 years on this, on either one. And, you know, I don't know how we keep track of that and monitor that. But we've had to bear the brunt of it twice this year.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm commenting, that best practices are, that, you know, are hot to wait this long, little tiny steps. But just to put it in perspective, had we done, for like a dollar increase for an average bill, had we done a, a small rate increase each year over 15 years, so roughly fairly.
Barely over a buck.
Very, fairly over a dollar a year. So. Like he just says, Jenny says, until they rate 534. This is not good practice, you school.
Usually about three or four year intervals is pretty common for the life of, you know, to at least look at it. Type of, you know, but and just watch your cash flow every year or two, you know, that we've been doing your tracking factors. If we see something funny there, we'll certainly let you know. But that part has, has stayed. If you were, you couldn't have lived this long without that ECA tracking back. Going 15 years on, on the portion of the rate that you all control all the time. There's a lot of municipal electrics doing what you're doing right now. I was in Lawrenceburg on Monday and ready to do the same type of thing in Greenfield. Yeah, they, they did a rate increase in 2018, I believe. But they're due, yeah. Tipton is getting ready to do.
So we're not immune. That's good to know.
You know, since most of them are on regular, I'll, I'll, I'll get that for you. I'll get that for you. But you're, you're not, you're not out of line. And comparisons are great, but it boils down to each utility has its own unique set of facts and circumstances. Size of your customer base, the density of your customer base, all those things. And, and what your capital improvement needs are, those all are unique to each situation. So, but I will get those for you.
Make one comment that Craig, he said something about utilizing general fund.
Well, no, but your realignment of how the overhead is allocated between, I didn't mean to say your general fund subsidizing, but did we not just reallocate some of the sort of shared overhead items?
Oh, yeah.
So that, that's where I was talking.
One of the reasons why our overhead for like town hall and general administration is a lot lower than other towns, other county, that sort of thing. You have utilities and the state board of accounts allows utilities. For instance, we use based on revenue. So like a good water is more revenue than what is brought in on the general fund. So predominantly expenses for town hall, certain salaries. Your salary is covered 70% by utility. Where if we were a town that doesn't have their utilities or had sold their utilities, that would all have to come out of the general fund, which is a tax component. So that's the beauty of it. And then of course, on the other end, because we're a municipal utility and not a private utility, our cost for administration buildings and salaries and that sort of thing. It dilutes the cost of the utility too, but.
Sure.
Right?
You have, you're managing.
Never sell the utility.
Yeah, that's, that's my general rule. I've, I've been involved in situations where they didn't always listen to me on that point. But, but, and there, there are unique situations that may be that, that's a smart thing at that point in time. But when you look at the life of your community, it's a lot longer than just, you know, doing something quick to fix something else, you know.
Any other questions from, for Buzz from up here? Any public comment?
How many telephone poles did you say you had?
There are not a couple, these would be powerful, but I think you said 4,000.
Karen, anyone on Zoom with a question? Okay. Great. With that, we will introduce the official ordinance 2023-28, an ordinance establishing revised schedule of rates and charges for the electric utility services to be collected from users on the town's electric utility system. And it references exhibit A and page 13. And I will make a note of option one. And then do we just do a motion for this, Jeff? Okay. Do I have a motion to officially introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion for introduction. Do we have a second for introduction?
I'll second it.
Okay. Since no, none of our council members are on Zoom, we can just, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, introduction is introduced, the ordinance is introduced. Anything else we need to do with that to make it official for the September 14th meeting?
Well, that's good. It would be in the newspaper.
Okay. Awesome. Any other public comment? Okay, at 6:14, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.